Kind of humorous as we come in, see y'all talking about this. So, you know, a lot change. Like, some of it happened to be that. So, we're seeing a bad hope. That's where it was supposed to be, but, uh, just as we pray today, I just, uh, this really prayer that Jesus asked us to pray. I just wanted to start with that and think about it tonight. It says, "Our Father in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come. Will be done on earth as it is in heaven." And there's this word, "hallowed," and this word, "sin." And it says, "God bless us today." Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this, uh, amazing city of the state of Texas. It is the state of Texas. This beautiful place, beautiful people, good people, work hard, live good, raise children. Just thank you for the many blessings you've given us. I ask the Lord's high and deep blessings me, helping me as I make decisions, and I work hard and have to study. I have no abilities to make sure that I'm doing the best I can. I just ask you to help me, to have these boundaries, and help me know that I've done the best I can, make the best decisions I can. Thank you for all the agenda items tonight. I ask the people that we personally represent here, and the people that we represent in this city. Thank you for our groups, for our department, and our services. We ask, Lord, that you protect them, keep them safe, watch over them. Be with our kids after hours of summer, and help them take their weight back, and grace them. Thank you, Lord, and may you bless us, and we ask you all that Jesus has been saying. Goodbye. Goodbye.
And, uh... 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 Glenwood Drive comes out onto Ashwood. It also comes out onto Bluebonnet to get out of the neighborhood. And, we've got a lot of kids in our neighborhood. And, one of the places they play is in the street. And, we found that, uh, the kids were having problems on their skateboards, on their rollerboards, uh, or roller skates, I guess it is, blade runners. They got plastic wheels on their toys, some of them, and, uh, all of this gravel and tire was tearing them up, much worse than what, uh, what the, uh, regular pavement is. So, um, then, a crew showed up about, I don't know, three, four weeks ago on Dogwood and put down tire and more gravel. And, uh, so I had a conversation with every one of my neighbors. And, fourteen of the sixteen neighbors decided they did not like that process. So, uh, we had, we wanted to voice our objection to having it done on Glenwood Drive, should you consider that at any point in the future. And, so I circulated a petition, and, uh, as I say, fourteen of the sixteen neighbors signed it. I'd like to hand that to you.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got, uh, Justin McClure.
All right, Mayor and City Council, thanks for letting us speak today. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of Texas Animal Protectors. We're a five oh one C three nonprofit that's been operating in E-Rath County for a couple of years now. And, what our main mission is, is to, uh, help with abandoned, abused, and neglected animals. But, for the last couple of years, uh, it's, it's kind of morphed from our original, uh, mission to kind of help neglected, abused, and, uh, and abandoned animals into kind of being an overflow for the, uh, for the shelter here in town, for the E-Rath County Humane Society. We, uh, years ago, they, we, we worked with them and kind of got some changes done out at the shelter. The shelter decided to become a no-kill facility, uh, which is a, uh, it's a dream of many, uh, animal facilities around the area, but it's really hard to obtain, uh, a no-kill status, uh, with being able to do that. And, also, being able to remain, uh, with your doors open, you know? Every time we read in the newspaper that the shelter is full again, and they hang a sign on the gate out front, uh, our animal intake increases significantly. We've been involved with that, besides Texas Animal Protectors, with other animal groups in this community and in surrounding communities for the last five years. And, uh, we, we have a lot of experience with other shelters and cities that surround us. Some of the things that the other, uh, other shelters do is that they, they post pictures of the animals on intake. So, it's a process of the intake of the animal, uh, to snap a photo of it, and to put it into a, uh, an easily viewable format so that not only animal owners that might have their dogs or cats, uh, that have been picked up by animal control, uh, that they can view outside of the, uh, open hours of the shelter. But, uh, also, they work really close with rescues, uh, in our area. And, I'm going to give you a few stats about the Mineral Wells Shelter. It, it seems to be one of the shelters, uh, there's actually less people in Mineral Wells or in the county over there. There's twenty-eight thousand people in the county over there. So, they're a little bit smaller than us. They do have a city ranch shelter. Uh, they paid four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to build this facility. Thirty-four dog runs over there. Uh, they have, uh, four cat condos, they call them, but they can house about fifteen cat cages over there that they, they, uh, deal with. Uh, they spend a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year, uh, in expenses to run their shelter, to pay their ACOs. Uh, they have three employees on staff over there. Uh, they currently work with, or they have connections with over eighty rescues, but they work with about twenty rescues regularly. Uh, and they have not had to close their shelter for an overpopulation problem that they can remember. That's never been a case in Mineral Wells.
Mr. McClure, your time is up.
I'll tell you what, he, he's, let's see, if you're representing a group, let's go ahead and give them ten minutes. I'm just going to go ahead. So, you got...
Uh, yes. Um, uh, the shelter vaccines and deworms all their animals. They have also raised over fifty thousand dollars in fines and fees, uh, from the impoundment of animals in their place and from, uh, they also, uh, enforce the, uh, the tagging of their animals, which is also a law that's on the books here that's, that, you know, looking at the budget here, they get about two thousand dollars a year in, in E-Rath County. So, there's a big discrepancy in what we bring in as far as fees and, and, uh, and, uh, fines each year as opposed to the county with less population that's right next to us. So, a, and I'm not saying that this is what, you know, we hope that one day our shelter can be this way, uh, but we understand that this is something that they've had to work on too. You know, they, their, their shelter wasn't as efficient, um, as it is today, and, and it's taken a lot of work for them to get where they are. The other concerns that I have about our shelter here, there's a Texas law that's on the book. It's Texas Administrative Code, uh, one sixty-nine dot twenty-six. And, uh, if you look at the law, and I have a copy of this for you guys, if you'd like to have it, you can have my copy. Number twelve on the list, it talks about primary enclosures. Uh, primary enclosure should be designated based upon enclosure guidelines prepared by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians and set forth in the latest edition of guidelines and standards. What it states is, uh, "It must enable the animal to remain dry and clean," uh, which is a bad problem out at our shelter every time that it rains. We were going to print out a bunch of pictures. I know you guys have seen them all. I've sent them to everybody, you know? "It must be constructed and maintained so that the surfaces are impervious to moisture and may be readily sanitized." Uh, the concern that we have with the, the shelter that we have, the outdoor kennels are not, that's not the case with the outdoor kennels, as they're dirt. Uh, "They must be constructed so as to protect the animal's feet and legs from injury." And, uh, "Outdoor facilities are acceptable under this section provided that those facilities meet all the requirements of this section." Uh, "This section applies to all animal shelters located in counties with a population of seventy-five thousand or greater, and, uh, and to all..." Let me find it, where, I lost my place. "The section applies to all animal shelters located in counties with population of seventy-five thousand or greater by Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter Eight Twenty-three, and to all quarantine or impoundment facilities regardless of county population," which the city of Stevieville uses that facility as their impoundment facility. For years that we've been trying to get some change done out there, the city kind of passes the buck off to the shelter as being a contractor that they don't have control over. And, the county, uh, or, or the shelter passes it off onto you guys for not funding them well enough to be able to carry out the duties that they do out at the shelter here to adequately, uh, take care of the animals that are in their care. Uh, I know that they are, it's on the agenda tonight that you guys are going to vote to renew their contract. Uh, you know, I, I, I would hope that you guys would look over the contract and consider putting some stipulations in there that enable our, uh, that enable our residents here to have a place to take their animals if they don't want them. Uh, we printed out a whole bunch of pictures I'd love for you to take a look at about some of the animals that we deal with, you know? Uh, and, and this is my twenty-fourth year of living here. A business opportunity has come to, uh, to my family's, uh, it's fallen in our lap, and, and we're about to pack up and move, you know? When we leave here, we're in fear that there's not going to be anybody able to pick up the slack that we picked up for five years around this area to care for these animals that are getting dumped in the county, you know? We do agree that they do need more money, but we are also, uh, we also believe that there needs to be some reform or a set of guidelines that are set into place to make sure that the people of this county can, can have a place, uh, regardless of their, uh, population out there, that, that needs to be controlled, you know? Uh, most shelters operate on a first-in, first-out basis, and you should never close a shelter because you're overfull, you know? We, we never, we never wanted them to quit euthanizing animals altogether. That wasn't the mission, you know? The mission was to do as much stuff between the intake of the animal and when they administered, uh, euthanasia to an animal, to be able to get that animal seen or adopted by somebody in the community. And, and we feel that that hasn't really been the case, uh, nor are the pictures being taken and posted online in a manner that's readily accessible by our community. So, I just want you guys, uh, to, to consider, uh, before you sign another contract with them for an extended period of time, uh, we feel that they should, uh, should submit a, uh, a guideline of operating procedures that will keep them from having to close the shelter down and not take, uh, not put a sign out that they can't take animals from our community. Because, uh, when they don't, uh, the pictures that I have in this envelope is what ends up happening. And, we feel that, you know, once we're, once we kind of ramp down our rescue here, uh, we're in fear that there's going to be a lot of animals here that are suffering, uh, because of the inadequacies of our shelter here in town. So, that's all I got.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, are there any other, uh, citizens requiring, uh, requesting input this evening? Okay, if not, then we'll move to the, uh, E-Rath County Appraisal District Report, and tonight we've got, uh, Mr. Jerry Lee, the Chief Appraiser here, so... Mr. Lee, thanks for being here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. Yeah, I'm, my name is Jerry Lee. I am the Executive Director slash Chief Appraiser of the E-Rath County Appraisal District. Been here for a long time, which probably means I need to have my head examined. I'm charged with the job from the state of Texas of placing a, a market value on all property within the county of E-Rath for tax purposes. Not the easiest job in the world, but, uh, we do the best we can. What I'm here to do tonight is to give you some preliminary numbers of where we, where the city of Stevieville is, uh, in twenty-seventeen. But, I gotta, I gotta preface it from the very beginning by telling you that the Appraiser Review Board has not finished meeting yet. They still have a couple of weeks of hearings, you know, on protests, uh, to, uh, go through. So, the numbers that I give you, uh, are, they could change. So, and I'm going to give, kind of give you round numbers anyway, so it's, it's not going to be exact. Currently in two thousand and seventeen, you have, uh, about one billion eight hundred million dollars in, uh, market value of property. You've got about one billion two hundred million in taxable value. The difference between those two is, uh, exemptions that are taken off, uh, which are primarily constitutionally exempt properties, which, which comes to about four hundred and sixty-eight million dollars and a hundred and eighteen million dollars, almost a hundred and nineteen million dollars in, uh, exemptions like free port abatements, uh, that sort of thing, pollution control equipment and that, that sort of thing. Which brings us down to the, uh, the million two hundred, or billion two hundred million dollars in, in taxable value that we have right now, which is approximately a hundred and thirty million dollars more than last year. And, by the end of the day, when the Appraiser Review Board gets through, I would expect somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and thirty million, uh, a hundred and twenty-five million maybe, to be left, to be, uh, value increase for twenty-seventeen. In which, the numbers just sort of lay that out. And, uh, that's sort of where the, the, the number's set for twen-, set for twenty-seventeen. I'm open for any questions that you might have about...
Okay.
...do anything that, that's going on.
Just open up for questions from the, uh, council?
I, I got a couple.
All right, ready, go ahead.
Mr. Lee, can you tell me, how, what would the, how many appeals were filed this year?
Oh, uh, pretty, I didn't come with that number in my hand. But, I'm going, I'm going to tell you, we had, we had a little over seven hundred people walk in the door and either file a protest or inquire about their property value.
Okay.
And, that, that was out of, uh, right at, right at twenty thousand value notices we sent out this year.
Okay. An increase from previous years or same?
Yeah, the, the value, the values this year were up, and, and that was a pretty large number of, of notices that we sent out this year.
And, I applaud y'all for, since I've just heard, had a lot of feedback on, I guess, since initial values, when a lot of people have received some more favorable input as far as value to be reassessed. Sorry, y'all didn't get that all reassessed. Talk to me something, but maybe this is more for the general public, but for me, what caused in twenty sixteen out of twenty seventeen, of course, the valuation increases we saw, what was this driving factor?
Just increase in the market. Uh, sales are up. Um, that, that's our, that's our benchmark, is, is we look at sales all over the county, and, uh, we, we compare those to what's on the roll, what, what sales we had in years past. Uh, so, you're, you're comparing a value on the road to a sales price on a particular property, and, and if, and if we're seeing that continually increase at some percentage, then we take that particular kind of property and, uh, and increase it accordingly. And, uh, we, we've had quite a large number of sales that we've had this year, as in last year. And, uh, and they're just have been, they've been slowly increasing, just, just like you and me, when we go to the grocery store, we pay a little bit more. It's the same, same concept.
That's all, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions?
Do you have somebody that comes out from the state that, uh, goes over your appraisals with you?
Yes, sir. Uh, the State Controller's Office comes out every two years and does an audit of our appraisals. And, uh, in doing that, we ha-, we have to give them all of our sales, uh, we're required to do that. And, then they take those sales and then they pull our property, our property cards, and they prepare, uh, they compare the sales prices to what we've got on our cards. Now, we can't just go in and raise the ones that sell, because they do studies to make sure that you're not doing that. They, they don't, they don't want sales chasing. So, so they look at other properties also to see if same type properties have also increased.
Okay. Do you need to be, say, within five percent?
Yeah, I have to be within five percent of what they consider market value. And, they, they calculate, using those sales, they calculate a market value for the county based on land, apartments, and they put it all together, and, and I've got to be within five percent plus or minus of that total number.
Okay. Why don't you use that argument to get the flak off your back?
Well, we do, we do when people come in, but, you know, it's, that, that, that basically winds up being an excuse, you know? Blame it on the state, you know?
Well...
That only gets me so far.
You don't get school money if you don't do that, right?
Right, it, it, it does, it is. If I don't make the, the, uh, five percent interval, then, uh, after a two-year period, first year is a grace period, if I miss it two years in a row, uh, then it affects school funding. And, that's the amount of, the amount of money that the state gives the school in, per student, in, in funding. And, that may mean that the local has to pick up the slack.
All right, okay, Mr. Nix?
The, the five percent plus or minus, is, is that, is that specifically directed at any one type of property, or is that across the board, Mr. Lee?
It's, it's across the board. They, they do break it down into single-family, multifamily, uh, land out in the county, out in the country, uh, uh, commercial and industrial. And then they have, uh, utilities and stuff like that. They break everything down into those categories, but, but the five percent applies to the, the total at the end.
Okay. Do y'all, do y'all check your values annually to see if you're, if you're kind of trending in the right direction or not? Or, or do you do that every other year to match the audit year?
No, I do it every year, because I don't, I don't want to get caught in a, in a two- or a three-year cycle of being behind the eight ball, so to speak, uh, and having to increase. Uh, I know if you've listened to any of the newscasts this past several months, you've heard stories of some of these places having to raise values as much as fifteen and sixteen percent. Well, a lot of, in a lot of those cases, now, I can't say that some of them haven't gone up that much in some of the big places, but in a lot of those places, they've waited on a three-year period to do a reappraisal. And, and so they get, they get caught with that three years of inflation that they're having to pull in at one time. I don't do it that way. I, I, I'd rather it be a little bit, three percent, five percent, whatever it has to be, a year to, to kind of keep up with it a little bit at a time, rather than, than...
Who does the oil, gas, and mineral appraisal?
It's a, it's a company we contract with called Pritchard and Abbott, and they, they do the oil and gas part and, and pipelines.
Okay, are there other questions, Mr. Nix?
The one point eight billion that's inside theaters, that count. The number they gave us from city numbers, not county.
They're, they're city numbers, yes.
Other questions?
Help me with this, if you will. How do y'all, how does the appraisal district derive funding? Where, where does it come from?
Okay, our, um, appraisal district and the board of directors creates a budget. And, that budget is then divided by all of the entities that are within the E-Rath County Appraisal District. Some of those entities go outside the county, as in, uh, we have part of DeLeon ISD that comes into our county, and part of Gordon ISD, Santo ISD, they come into our county, so they, they, they get a portion of it also. But, it takes all those entities that collect taxes, and it totals their tax levy. Each one of them has a total tax levy that they had, and, and it's doing it from the year before, your total tax levy. And, that percentage of the total that each one of those are is the percentage that that entity pays into my budget. That percentage of my budget. So, if I have a, if, if you have, uh, a ten percent piece of that, and I have a million-dollar budget, you pay a hundred thousand dollars into the budget, and, you know, over, over...
What, what is that rate of pay, General?
Excuse me?
What is that rate of pay, General, that they pay to the appraisal district? The percentage?
Um, I don't, I don't think I understand your question. The, because it, it's not a rate.
All right.
There, there's not a rate.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood you. I thought that there was a percentage.
You take, like, okay, let's say, the city of Stevieville collects a million dollars in taxes. Uh, Stevieville ISD collects two million dollars in taxes. E-Rath County collects a million and a half. We add all... We add all of those up and you get the total levy, but, and then you take Stevensville's one million and divide it into the total and that gives you their percentage that they pay. Like, uh, I don't remember off the top of my head what Stevensville ISD's, I mean, Stevensville City's percentage is. It's, I, I just don't remember.
Okay.
But, but that's done for all of the coun- all of the entities added together and that percentage. And then when, when all of the entities have come up with a new tax rate after I've given you your new values for, uh, twenty seventeen in October or November, September or whenever, you come up with a, with a tax rate and everybody else, all the schools have come up with a tax rate, then we sit down and we multiply that out to come up with a, what the potential levy is for each one of those taxing entities. Divide those out just like I explained and that becomes, that percentage becomes the portion of, of whatever my budget is. So, so if you, if you have a twenty-five percent, then you're paying twenty-five percent, if you have thirty-five percent, then, and it gets down to, some of the small ones may only have more than two percent.
Well, you, you've answered my question, but in a general sense, if appraisal values go up, then your budget would go up, correct?
No, not necessarily.
All right.
No, no, my budget, my, the values in my budget are not tied together in any, any way.
Okay, what about, uh, Pritchard and Abbott you just mentioned, uh, how, how are those, how are those people paid when you contract with them?
We, they're just part of our budget, you know, we contract with them to, to do that, they, we go out and take bids for, uh, the con- those contract services and Pritchard and Abbott's always the lowest. And, uh, that just gets entered into our budget.
Right.
As, as a line item in our budget.
Okay, well, that, that's it, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Okay, there are three taxing entities?
There are.
Are this three taxing?
No, there's, there's not, we have nineteen totally.
Oh, okay, 'cause you're talking school districts.
Yeah, all the school districts, the county, the water, uh, Mill Trinity Water, uh, High School has a.
Cities.
Emergency district.
Yeah.
So all, all of those together.
And if that Ranger College thing goes, you'll have one more.
That's true.
Okay, other questions?
I've, I've got a couple, um, just to clarify, um, before I get to the questions. The, the market value, appraised value and sales price, there's a difference. Could you, 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 you use the term sales price, it influences your appraised value, and then you said market value. So in, in your vernacular, the difference between a market value and appraised value is, or is there a difference?
In a, in a perfect world, sales price is market value. We don't live in a perfect world and, and I'm, and I'm charged with putting a market value on all property, you know? That's presuming, what will that property sell for if it was put on the market on January first of twenty seventeen? So I use those sales, which is supposed to be market value, to tell me that range or a range of what that market value should be. And I'm taking, well, I'm telling how many sales in a particular, let's just say, single-family residence, uh, to compare it to. And those sales are all over the board, you know, they're, what a willing buyer and a willing seller are willing to negotiate and come up with, uh, and make a arms-length transaction. One of them can be off-the-charts high, another one can be a really great deal, somebody just, and they're all over the place. And so I'm there in the middle somewhere.
So do you look at an average or a median?
I wouldn't call it an average.
Okay.
Aver- average is not a word that appraisal is supposed to use. But, but technically, yeah, it's kind of an average, I'm, I'm looking and I'm, I'm, I'm giving it a weight.
So the market value basically is, is a, is a, uh, for a layman to think about, it would be an average of sales in that market sector.
Right, but it's a, it's sort of a weighted average.
Right, okay.
Because if I've got a ten million dollar property out here that sells, that.
Skew the results.
It skews everything.
Right, right, okay. So, um, the, the influences on our market, uh, are they from within the county or within the region? When you talk about market, uh, sales prices increasing?
No, only the county, I'm only looking at.
No, but if you look at it from an economic perspective and say that the value of, sales have gone up, so market value has increased, what is driving that?
The sales of E R A County, I'm looking only at those.
Right.
I mean, I, I see those other influences.
Okay.
But nine times out of ten, they don't fit E R A County.
Okay, so i- is, is there any assessment that you do that, 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 um, kind of diagnoses what is, is causing the increase in sales value, the sales amount? Do you look at housing inventory or commercial property inventory as a way to try to reconcile why something has increased? Do you, do you do any analysis with that?
We do, not, not on paper. I mean, that's part of our consideration when we're looking at, at the total numbers and stuff, but we're thinking about, okay, what, what was the inventory? Did we have a big inventory, did we not have a big inventory? And that, and that's one of the things that's, that's a really big thing here in E R A County, is don't, normally, we don't have a large inventory. And, but, and, and that really works, that, that seems to work really good for, I won't say lower-priced homes, as, as using homes as an example, single-family residences. Not so much for the higher-priced ones because we have fewer people that are able to afford those homes. So I have to figure that in when I'm sitting there looking at the numbers and that's kind of rolling around in my head, but no, I don't do a, a formal study.
Two more quick questions here, so what, what sector did you, would you say or two sectors had the greatest increase?
Land.
Just raw land, grain, grain?
Raw, raw land values. Um. It's probably gonna be between single-family residences and that's because there's so many of them and then just commercial properties.
Okay, all right, a last question, you, you talked about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million increase, how much of that is, is due to, um, appraisal increase versus new, new bill, new inventory?
Looks like we had about nine million dollars in new home sites. Well, and then there's another almost fifteen million dollars in, in non-home sites, so that's Barnes, other, that, that's, that's not considered home site, house site.
Okay. And do you have any other breakdowns with you on that for new?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I will thank you for, uh, for being here.
Appreciate you having me.
That's summary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Okay, next on the agenda is to, um, this is, uh, a resolution that we're gonna consider tonight, uh, related to the, the finding that an Encore Electric Delivery Company, uh, the application to change rates within the city should be denied and finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. And, uh, we've, we've got with us tonight and I, I want to thank her for being here, Sue Mercer, the customer operations for West Region Manager, um, for Encore. So thank you for being here and, uh, Ellen, I'll just turn, afford you to explain what we're looking at and let you, uh, sue guys for this.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, excuse me, the city of Gonzales, I, I did it.
You owe us a coke.
Oh, you a coke. The city of Stevensville, that's who I work for, uh, is, is one of a hundred and fifty-eight cities that are served by Encore Electric. There's a steering committee of cities that, uh, are Encore customers, that retain original jurisdiction over their cases. On March seventeenth of this year, Encore filed an application for a rate case, uh, retail, with the cities retaining our, our jurisdiction. Essentially, it is a five, a, a seven and point five percent overall increase with, uh, residential rates increasing eleven point eight percent, a half percent in street lighting. That translates to about six dollars and sixty-eight cents per residential customer with a thousand kilowatt hour bill. There have been negotiations with the, the company and the, the cities. We previously have, uh, delayed or suspended the, the rate case for a hundred and twenty days, that hundred and twenty days by negotiation with the companies up August the nineteenth. Based on the recommendation of the attorneys representing the Encore Electric Steering, the city's Steering Committees, we recommend denying this rate increase, Encore is fully aware of our intention to deny this. It will allow them to take the case to the P U C T and to equalize their rates system-wide. This area of Texas may pay more or may pay less than the next area over is the way I understand it, and this will give them statewide rates over the area that they, they have jurisdiction. Therefore, staff respectfully recommends that we deny the rate increase, uh, as proposed by Encore Electric.
Ms. Marshall, would you like to address the council?
Uh, and I'm here mainly to answer questions, if any of you do have questions. I would like to make just one clarification, uh, we actually serve four hundred and two cities. I think the number of cities that you spoke of was, was those that are in the Steering Committee itself. We did originally ask the cities to deny the case and the purpose was very well stated by Mr. Barnes. Uh, we, we asked the cities to deny the case because we wanted to go to the Public Utility Commission to have the same rate throughout our system. That's what we have done in the past and that's what we'd like to continue to operate with that one rate. Y'all ask tough questions or you ask a lot of thorough questions, I was very impressed with that. I don't know how much we pay in taxes, but we pay a lot. In many cities that are similar, or cities or counties, whichever, many cities that are similar to Stevensville were one of the highest, uh, appraised entities in, in that city, so I'd have to depend on someone else. I didn't come with that as I, I sat and listened, uh, to Mr. Lee, I thought, I wonder what our taxes are here and where we are. I used to have, I, I do have that out on the cloud in a spreadsheet, but we're not allowed to access the cloud anymore due to some security reasons, so. We do pay a lot of property taxes to all, all of those entities, uh, as well as the city of Stevensville, as well as franchise taxes, so. Just throw that out there.
Any questions for Ms. Marshall?
Encore changed ownership recently.
Not yet. Encore is owned by E F H or Energy Future Holdings. They actually filed a bankruptcy three years ago, about three years ago. Encore is ring-fenced from E F H, and you know, how can your owner be bankrupt and you're not? That is the case. Just this last Friday, Berkshire Hathaway announced a, uh, that they're interested in purchasing and have put forth some, uh, some information for that. That is under negotiation now, in fact, there's a hearing tomorrow at the bankruptcy court, um, and, and I feel like that's what you're asking about. Initially, Hunt, uh, the Hunt Enterprises, Hunt.
Brothers.
The Hunt Brothers, uh, made the first bid and it went to the Public Utility Commission, it was not approved. It was a REIT-type structure, a real estate investment trust, that was not approved. Then Next, Next Era, uh, made a run and offered a, a real good price for Encore and that too was not approved at the state due to, uh, the Public Utility Commission wanted a, a ring fence put in place. They also had several other commitments that Next Era did not agree to. So the final hearings went through, three hearings and it was turned down three times. This time with Berkshire Hathaway, uh, they have already worked with the Steering Committee of Cities. They've worked with several other of the major intervenors in, in our cases, as well as the Office of Public Utility, uh, is it Council? I didn't bring that information with me, so I'm recalling from memory with this. They've already worked out forty, uh, plus commitments and all of the things that the P U C has asked the other companies to agree to, they have agreed to. There is a, uh, person, there's a group that owns, uh, the major holder of the debt of the unsecured loans that has come back and he's, he's wanting a higher price from Berkshire Hathaway. Berkshire Hathaway has offered, I think it's eighteen point four billion, over eighteen billion, uh, for the company and he's wanting a little bit more, uh, so that the additional, they're within like three hundred million or so from one article that I read. And that money would go to that debt that he owns, uh, so. It's, it's really in the hands of the bankruptcy court and then it goes to the Public Utility Commission and several others, uh, over that. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Marshall, appreciate it. If, if there are other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'm going to adopt Resolution Twenty Seventeen or nineteen.
Motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Ms. Clinton to approve Resolution Twenty Seventeen or Nineteen, any discussion?
Remind us again, please, for what this motion, I mean, what this resolution does? It denies the res- rate increase that has been requested.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Now we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, since I've, I've sang aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, approving Resolution Twenty Seventeen or Nineteen, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC's application to the rate, uh, change within the city should be denied and finding that the city's reasonable rate case expense shall be reimbursed by the company. All right, next item on the agenda is to consider an extension of contract with E R A County Humane Society and, uh, Barnes, I'll let you brief that, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a sixty-day extension of the current contract with E R A County, uh, Humane Society. Their lease and our contract both expire on July twentieth and because of some negotiations that have gone on and, and conversations between the county attorney and our attorney, we feel that we're fairly close to an agreement, however, an agreement has not been reached and both parties have agreed to extend the existing contract sixty days for further negotiations. Therefore, staff respectfully recommends the approval of this extension.
Okay, any questions for Ellen?
Mr. Barnes, do you feel like that y'all will be able to resolve this in the sixty-day period and, and be able to bring back a, a lease agreement that's acceptable to both parties?
Yes, sir, we have a meeting that is tentatively scheduled for August the eleventh, at which time I think we will. Yes, sir. We have a meeting that is tentatively scheduled for August the eleventh, at which time I think we will hammer out any differences that we have, or at least find out how far apart we truly are. And and I think that will give us enough time to overcome any differences or at least reach a compromise.
Thank you for your work, and Randy, thank you for your work on this also.
Any other questions for Alan? Now, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the contract and lease extension as presented.
Any motion by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. Clinton. Any discussion? Now, proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. If that motion carries unanimous vote. Uh, before we leave this, um, I I want to ask the council. We had a work session on this, uh, item. There was a lengthy discussion about facility needs and location, and I don't I don't know that we've heard anything back on that, and I would I would think that we would need to, uh, as a council, consider those options before this meeting on the eleventh of August, so the staff knows what position the council wants to take with the negotiation.
We we currently have a workshop scheduled for July twenty-fifth, and we can add it to that agenda.
Okay, as we were considering donation of land, uh.
Yes, sir.
Facilitating new building construction, uh, through donors, many of the the issues that were brought up tonight, uh, earlier have been a part of that conversation.
Yes, sir, they have.
They definitely, I I would think, and I'm asking the council, that we we need to discuss this before the August eleventh meeting. Is there agreement with that? So we'll put it on the August twenty-fifth meeting.
July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay. And, um, I I just want to say, because of the the comments that were made earlier, that we we do understand the importance of this as a council and, you know, working hard for, um, uh, a solution.
Yes, sir.
All right, next on the agenda is the Stephen Economic Development Authority Report, and we've got Dr. Hubbard here.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Okay, we're gonna do a couple of things that maybe it's unusual, but I think it'll be a good thing for us to go on and do. We're gonna kind of talk about some of the activities going on in SEDA. Tonight, I'm gonna focus on two things. One, kind of the analysis of a an R F P, and then for a few seconds, we're gonna go on and talk about the retail gap analysis that that was just done. So I'm gonna, I'm supposed to try to do this first. I have a PhD, but I still don't know how to control this. Let's see if we can do this right. Okay, we got it. Okay, good for me. Let's talk about the R F P process first. Now, what happens, uh, there are two ways that we can go about it. An R F P is request for proposals. We get requests that come in from different businesses that are looking at Texas and Stevenville all the time, primarily from Team Texas, that's the Economic Development Arm, uh, Texas Wide Open for Business, that's the Governor's Office, then, believe it or not, Encore, because they have a vested interest in providing, uh, facilities, because they want to sell electricity. So we get from one of these things, we we get R F Ps all the time, besides us proactively going out and looking for businesses. So we get these in to to, uh, Stevenville, to the E D A. And let me, and so we go, what we do, we respond to the ones that meet the qualifications, because we get a lot that, well, we get many that we don't meet their qualifications or what they're looking for, whether it's being ten miles from interstate or whatever it might be. So what I'll do then is go in and take those that I think we meet, you know, we're shopping in the same supermarket, that things that they would want, and I'll go and I'll reply back to the Governor's Office. Here's an example of one that just came through here. This, you know, says, no, if this site does not meet any criteria shown below, don't submit. So we don't, we don't want to waste their time or waste my time either. Each one, each request takes between six to sometimes fifteen or twenty hours just gathering all the information that they need on each one of them. So, okay, throughout the years, now, this won't be all of them. This isn't an exhaustive list, but I want to kind of give an example of some of the projects that we've been working on, that we sent off through here. And and what's really interesting, you see all these really crazy names like Project Iron and Project Wolfman, and that's because at that time, the company does not want us to know who they are, because it could be a lot of things, like, maybe they're gonna move. They don't want the employees to know that they're moving it, or maybe they're trying to purchase some property, and they don't want people to know. So it's kind of like, I kind of think it's like God, you know, it's on an as need to know basis, you know? God tells us what we need and when we have it. Well, in this case, they're not God, but they, uh, tell us just enough information that they need, because they don't want to disserve anything. So these are some of the, actually, these are some of the projects, not all of them, that we have responded to since August second, up to Project D S, which, uh, was later as March twenty-ninth. Also, there's another project, Project Summer, which you'll be hearing about real soon. We're actually probably will, are gonna have to have an executive session on Project Summer, hopefully at the next council meeting, but talked to a representative today. They want to make sure that the council, even though we've already signed non-disclosure agreements, they want their own non-disclosure agreement. We'll have you look at that to Mr. Thomas and review that, um, before they can reveal who they are. So we've we talked about that, so you'll be hearing that. That's gonna be a very important one for you guys to do. But let's go back to these. These are some of the ones that we've got, and what I want to focus on now is Project D S. And Project D S is actually Southwest Rail. We can talk about that one now, because we can. They've they've given us permission to talk about that one. We actually had a site visit there last Friday, and I want to just give a big round of applause to everyone that helped in that. The mayor was there. He greeted them. Our city administrator, Alan Barnes, and let me tell you, this guy over here, Nick, that's reading his booklet and not paying attention to me. This guy, let me tell you, if every city had people like Mr. Williams here, that he came out, he did everything that we needed to do. And let me tell you, that fact was evident on Friday, the 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 spirit that we got on that. I'm gonna read a, uh, I think I've got it up here, too. Boy, you can't read that. But this is, actually, what this is here, which you can't see, but I'm gonna go in and explain it to you. There are a couple of things on it. This is a response that we got from actually from Team Texas. That's the Economic Development Arm on Project D S, you know? You look at the date on that, that's March, I think, March, uh, ninth, this is twenty-nine? I tell you what, I woke up this morning, and I had to read something. I I thought I had twenty-ten vision to try to try to read something. I couldn't read it. It took me a few minutes, and then I was able to read it. I can't read that at all. That's why I have the the dates up there. So I've been talking back and forth with this company, which I only knew by the name Project D S, since probably after I submitted it, probably around the latter part of April. And up until about three weeks ago, all I knew was this was Project D S, and then they finally said, okay, this is where Southwest Rail. We want to meet you. We want to meet with you on July seventh. This is the only day that we can do it. Let's have a, let's have a meet. And so let me tell you, Ms. Mr. Barnes and the mayor and then a bunch of other people, State College, SEDA, Ranger College, Tarleton, they all gathered around and rallied the the utility companies. We met, Texas A and M Extension, allowed us to have their facility, because right across the street was the site that they were looking at. We got all the information that they need. And this is, this is what they said. Uh, this is a site representative. This is what he said. You can't read up there. I can't read it either, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it from here. John, thanks for following up and putting a well-together orchestrated event. Stevenville's community obviously has a lot to offer. Our team has taken this week to debrief from our trip and consider our next steps forward. I'll be in touch with you in more detail during the next several days. What I can tell you about that, it's my experience, you know, you kiss a lot of babes, and as as politicians, you probably know that. You kiss a lot of babes. Probably about one out of twenty will will come here, you know, and that's after it begins, you know, after the sites, site selections. You can see there, there were probably, oh, I forgot, there were ten or so that I listed up there that we had various degrees of responses from. And like I said, there's one in the works. So there's a lot of effort. A lot of times, you don't see that effort, but there's a lot of things that that go into it behind the scenes. And so I'm so proud of that group. I'm so proud. Thank you very much, Mayor, and Mr. City Administrator and Mr. Williams for what you've done. It shows what kind of community we are, and this is what I'll say about that, too, is whether they select us or not, they don't determine what kind of community we are. We determine what type of community we are, but it was very evident of the can-do spirit we've got there. So I want to commend all of you for that. So we'll know in the next few weeks or a few days, um, what that, what will happen from there. Now, I'm gonna switch gears a little bit, and.
So John, if you would, let, just allow me to interrupt you for a second, and thank you for your, um, leadership with that event.
Thank you.
Uh, can can we talk about what that company does?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, you know, I should back up and talk about that. Yeah, let's do that.
Just briefly, I mean, not not in great length, but.
I've got a, I've got a, I can control that for a little bit, yeah. Okay, well, it's a company. Initially, it's Southwest Rail. They refurbish rail cars. They own about, I think, nine thousand is what he said.
Six to nine thousand.
Six to nine thousand, and I think.
Six to nine.
Yeah, six to nine thousand, and I think they were two hundred thousand rail cars, you know, United Stateswide. But anyway, what they do, they refurbish rail cars, and they send them off to different systems. So people use that so they can, different companies, so they can ship their stuff back and forth. They're, they outsource that right now. What they're looking to do is have a brand-new facility here or somewhere. We're, let me back up and say, we're one of, I have a nationwide search. We're one of three places. All three places happen to be in Texas. So we're one of three, so we made that big cut to three, and now we're one of three that's being considered. So they're looking at this refurbishing place, um, to refurb, uh, refabricate the rail cars. One of the things that, to our advantage, was the training that we offer, and, you know, Ranger College has done a similar program. They've offered their help. They talked about that. Our workforce, you know, they talked about that. Initially, they'll have about, in over two years, they'll have about, uh, forty people, mainly welders that will be coming here. They'll have some office personnel that'll be here as well, but they hope, that's just the initial phase of the project. They hope to expand that project over the years after that to up to a hundred and fifty people that will be coming here. So it'll be a really good project for us, for some community. It'll be really good, so. And I had those figures. The average, uh, payroll was about thirty-five thousand dollars for the welders. I do know that. And, uh, so this will be a really good project for us, and, um.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
Yep, that's good.
So now, let's talk about the retail trade area, and, uh, this is, uh, was done by the retail coach, and this shows our retail, our our trade area. What I will do, I will make sure that each of you, I'll give it to our, one of our city secretaries here, and I'll make sure that you each, you get a copy of that retail, that that analysis. But what's interesting in this analysis is, well, that's our retail trade area. It's it's actually a pretty big one. But more importantly, and you can't, you can't read that either. I can't read it. I'll pull it off of here. And you'll have this information. I'll go in and talk about that. They talk about what's called a retail gap analysis. In other words, what the available money there is in the community, how much of it goes outside the community versus how much stays in the community? And I think that first one up there, turn around here and look, um, I have grocery stores. It's it's point three seven four. So what that means is, for grocery stores, only thirty-seven percent, thirty-seven point four percent of the money, or people are spending their money inside Stevenville to buy groceries, so that means that sixty-three percent is going out somewhere outside Stevenville. And then it it identifies the number of dollars that are spent on that as well, so it's it's an eye-opener. Ideally, we want this at one, and really, we want it over one, because we want people to come from outside. Like, I would read, I would, I would guess, and this is just my guess, that, say, Granbury, I bet you they have a higher, I bet you their retail for grocery stores is over one. That's what we want, but this is a great tool for us to use. We've got a group that's coming in this week. I can't say the name of the group yet, but we can use this information here and say, hey, you know, look at the opportunity that we've got here for for Stevenville to come on in here and do that. So, uh, make sure that you get that. Um, thank you again for the great job. Mr. Alan, thank you very much for what you've done on that. I appreciate that. And you two, and Mayor, of course, they loved you. So, uh, I got a lot of good comments about you. You look surprised. Anyway, I want to, I've got a, hey, questions. Any questions for me? Yes, sir.
When when is Aldi's coming?
You know, I know they're working on it. I know they're, and you might have a lot of stuff to do with that with the next agenda item. So, uh, I know they're working on it. They want to be here. They they want to be here. They're coming here. I don't know the timeframe on that. A lot of that will depend on what happens to, um, today.
Well, uh, okay, you asked the the city for forty thousand. I think that's what's regenerating on the light.
Yes, sir.
And you said then, that's all it would take to get Aldi's to come, and I said, have you got that in writing? And you said, no, but they had assured you that they would come.
Well, we, they're coming. We actually, with the agreement that both SEDA and the city council made is, that's a loan right now for that that light. Now, if they don't put that light in, they have to pay that money back to us. So it's what, it's a convert, it's a loan that can't convert to a grant contingent on that development coming in. We did, they haven't put those clawbacks in to protect ourselves, so we're protected with that. But, you know, the Aldi folks are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna come in, but one of the first things they gotta do is get the, you're gonna plat the property, right? Is that what's happening today? Well, they can't, they can't build on an unplanted piece of property.
The the plat for this evening is not that area. We've already.
Doesn't, that's across the street, isn't it?
Right.
Okay, then take back everything I just said on that.
Right, right.
But they're coming in. They're coming. I I don't know the timeframe, but I do know that the sooner, they want to be, they they absolutely want to be here.
Mr. Mayor, uh, probably a couple of months ago, Jeremy and I think Nick and I met with the representatives of Aldi, and she said that she has a green light to build the store. However, when they build a store, it, one of their corporate requirements is it has to be at what's called a hard corner, a corner with a red light, and they will not let them open the store until the red light is physically there, and so she cannot justify building a store until the red light's there. So that's what she said they're waiting on. She gave no hesitation, no evasion of mind, anything about coming, but they have to have the red light in place.
Well, how do you get that done?
You call Tech dot and ask them when they're gonna, uh, give the proceed to construct, which, so I guess someone needs to do that.
You know what?
What's the average turnaround? Do you have any idea? Average turnaround?
Well, it's it, it's in the process. I believe it's gonna be done within six months. Now, there's some other development that's gonna go in before the Aldis will be, but Mr. Allen is right about that. They have to have a hard corner. They've done all this neural network stuff, and with their business plan, they have to have a traffic scene. But they do want to come in. They are coming in. It's just a matter of us getting every, all the infrastructure together. But it'll, it's coming.
Where where are we on the bowling alley?
Now, that's what's, that's what we're talking about. That's your next agenda item, is the entertainment center. I'm actually, uh, have met with them, uh, Jeremy actually was with us. We met with him Friday, didn't we, Jeremy? Just checking to see if you're awake. We, yeah, they're anxious to come. They plan on breaking ground in by September and opening up in August of next year.
I want to thank you for the updates that we've been giving.
You're welcome.
Been very, very, uh, very useful. I commend you for that, but I do want to talk a little bit about Southwest Rail, and maybe I missed missed this. Where where are they based out of?
They're based halfway between Houston and Austin and Wilham.
Wymer.
Wymer.
And Wymer.
Wymer, Wymer, Texas.
What, with three Texas locations, logistically, what what is driving this? Is it the frac sand market, or is it, do you know?
Well, I can only make a guess based on the questions that they've asked me. One is, one, they've got the rail system that's here. That's one. Two, they've got the workforce that they need for that and and the training, because they're gonna need welders, and those programs are gonna play. Those are, I think, the three main drivers.
And if I could add to that, having been at the meeting, if you look at the rail system, there's a, there's a main line to our south. There's a main line to our north, and Fort Worth Western goes between the two, and we have, in the Fort Worth area, the largest rail interchange in the nation, I think they said.
That's that's correct.
I think our proximity to the railcar market is, geography is is in our favor.
They can get them there quickly.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. It is exciting.
Are any other questions for Dr. Hubbard?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Constance, you're welcome.
All right, next, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, so Jeremy Allen. And I will, uh, open a public hearing at this time. To consider approval of a preliminary plat of Christie Plaza Two Development located at Christie Plaza, US three seventy-seven. And, uh, ask Jeremy to give us a brief on that.
Christie Plaza is a proposed nineteen point five one acre development, the owner has submitted preliminary plat for a nine lot development. The proposed development will feature lots ranging from under a half acre, uh, up to four point eight six acres. The developer will market a commercial development. The property is located at Christie Plaza and three seventy-seven, there are currently eight lots occupied adjacent to the proposed nine lots, to give you a little bit of reference, uh, which include La Quinta, Whataburger, Car Wash, Chicken Express, Cotton Patch, and Pet Supply Store. Uh, it's currently zoned industrial, um, the building use for, building use regulations for industrials intend to serve the local, for general industrial activities, which will include some of the, the potential clients they have for that development. Um, I don't think we'll need to rezone it currently for any of those lots. Uh, the property is served by an eight inch water main located at the cul-de-sac of Christie Plaza. The sewer, uh, the property is served by a six inch sewer main located at the cul-de-sac of into Christie Plaza as well. Streets, uh, the developer plans to extend Christie Plaza through the development with a sixty foot dedication right of way. The street will merge with Lockhart at the southeast corner of the property. Uh, if you can show a couple of pictures of that develop, that first picture. Um, and I think I gave you guys a supplemental packet to kinda update some of the information, that might be a better way to look at it as well. Um, let's see, the existing zone in the area, the development is bordered, uh, to the east with the B two retail commercial district. The remainder of the zoning that surrounds the development is industrial. Uh, staff recommends acceptance of the preliminary plat located at Christie Plaza, presented, uh, contention upon the amended thoroughfare plan. So, before we amend, uh, accept the final plat, we will have to amend the thoroughfare plan with some, uh, with the roads, and I'm gonna go over that. As well as on next Tuesday, we'll have a, a planning zone, planning and building committee meeting, which will go over in more depth for that as well. That, the thoroughfare plan is not up for, um, vote tonight, that'll come next meeting after we get through P and Z, and if they get a, would depend on what their recommendation is. Um, the planning zoning commission, uh, voting unanimously in favor, recommend approval of preliminary plat. Um, like I said, contingent upon the amended thoroughfare plan for the final plat. Um, so this is the zoning for that property. Um, this is the, currently the thoroughfare plan, just kinda give you a little bit of background so you can be informed with the preliminary plat as you move forward. Now, preliminary plat, you know, you guys can make suggestions or changes, um, prior to the final plat being accepted. This is the thoroughfare plan here, um, as you can see, in the, the yellow dotted are proposed arterial roads, which are a hundred foot right of way. Um, there's other, another development off of Christie Plaza that we're working with, so, um, we're actually proposing that the, the top three coming off of the red, which is Washington, coming down to the south, that are in yellow that are coming down, um, we're talking about, um, amended thoroughfare plan to make those collector streets. And so, if you'll see it, I zoomed in a little bit, and the, this, um, let's see if I can point here. This here is the plat, if you would saw the plat, so this collector road is actually coming down to the development. Uh, we're proposing making this a collector road and the other one a collector road. Um, you know, I think the next slide, it just kinda give you a little bit of difference between what a collector road is versus what a arterial road is. And so, the pavement is up to forty feet, the right of way of seventy feet. So, you take a minor arterial road through a development, I mean, you're talking about an extra thirty foot of right of way and quite a bit of expense when you start talking about, uh, you know, a large road through a development. And so, this development here plus, uh, the other development, uh, we thought it was in the best interest to, um, to, to, to narrow that down to a collector. It's kind of an example of what, what a collector is versus, uh, an arterial. So, this is Harbin Drive, this would be the, the width of a, a collector road. You can see Harbin's a, you know, a good collector street, we typically don't have a lot of, of traffic or traffic issues with Harbin. Uh, arterial road, if anybody wants, so we can play a guess the street game, but, um, this would be Wolf Nursery. So, um, that would be an arterial road, so if you can imagine arterial road going through a development, it would kinda kill it. And so, this is why, uh, we're recommending, um, do, changing to collector. Somebody asked me, uh, you know, what's your thought on i- if we're gonna have, be able to, if changing these to collectors? One, we're adding an additional collector road by making Lockhart a collector, which is originally, uh, just a local road, so we're, we're making that one bigger. Somebody asked me if I thought that was gonna be enough in reducing down arterials. I'm not smart enough for that, I did talk to, uh, our, our engineer, Gene, who has thirty something years of, of road experience. He gave me a whole email about why i- he thinks it'll be okay. It actually mimics something that Freezer Nichols sent me as well. So, I think we're gonna be okay as, as it develops to the south, because we have four collectors coming down in that area. So, I think we're gonna be okay. Like I said, that's a, that's another agenda item, we're not here to discuss that one, we're here to discuss the original preliminary plat. Uh, staff recommends we accept the preliminary plat tonight, and then we'll, uh, take the P and Z back for final plat, um, in July nineteenth.
Questions for Jeremy?
So, can I ask a question about the, the roads?
Sure you can.
Okay, so, right now, we have Christie Plaza, we know there's a lot scheduled there.
That's right.
I still have my concerns about shunting that traffic off of Lockhart through that development to catch that left-hand light. Is that, is that something that's been discussed?
Say that one more time, so Lockhart, we're on Lockhart, you're talking about taking a left onto the loop?
Three seventy-seven.
Okay.
So, because the lights at Christie Plaza, isn't that gonna shunt traffic, I mean, that's where I'd go.
I think that's a concern, and, and when I had talked with, with Gene about this, who, who, like I said, a lot more knowledgeable than I am, he said, if the track, traffic warranted, or if there's a number of issues there, Text Dot will warrant a light there. And so, that's a, that's a Text Dot decision as far as adding a light there in the future.
At Lockhart.
Yeah, at Lockhart.
Other questions?
And I'm not speaking for Text Dot, that was just a concern if there's enough, uh, traffic issues there, hopefully not. Go ahead.
I recognize that when you're talking investments in development like this, the, the size and the requirements for the road are significant. Because you're talking about a length a- as well as a width, of square footage that you're relinquishing from your developable property to provide for the roads, because the developer provides those rights of way to the city, correct?
That's right.
So, I, I understand there's a significant dollar investment here, but at the same time, and I, I kinda agree with what Mark's asking, if we look at this development specifically now, but future development south of there, which we think will happen eventually as it crosses the railroad and goes that direction, those, those volumes of traffic are also gonna be funneled back into these roads. And I, I'm concerned about minimizing the, the traffic issues and problems in this area. Maybe, maybe the safety concerns, maybe the traffic flow, maybe some of these other things could outweigh the financial impact of, of requiring these roads to remain as they have been suggested by the, the engineers and the studies that we've looked at. I, I recognize that I don't have the expertise that Gene has, and I never will. If, if he, as our resident engineer and, and traffic specialist, I would call him, or is comfortable with this, had, do you know if he has looked at the, the potential future growth in that southern area that's gonna impact this at some point, we believe?
I mean, I don't think, you know, right now, we have two properties that are just south of, that Washington, these two developments that we're looking at. I mean, as far as future development, I mean, it's possible, but we don't have a crystal ball, so, I mean, for him to look at future development, I mean, he has looked at the, the road south of, south of this, which is, you know, we have the, the road that's coming off of Wolf Nursery that, that we propose to be a collector that goes across and goes east to west, but there's also another arterial road that goes east to west that's, that's further south than that. So, I mean, I think there's a, there's a network there, uh, of roads if it develops to the south. So, I mean, if you have a specific question, but, I mean, I, I, did I give the question, or did I get an answer to any question you had?
I think so, but I guess my greatest concern is the fact that we have traffic flow issues already in a number of areas around town. And in my mind, at least, it was because of the, the planning did not adequately address future needs, and that's what I, I'm trying to be sure that we do now. It's not just this specific development, I think if, what, what you're proposing here will, will more than be adequate for it. But that future need in that future development is, is what we need to be cautious, because we can't go back after the fact and increase this road size, because we have development there that will prohibit that financially for the city and the developers also. And I, I don't wanna have the same problems in this area that we seem to have in some others with congestion, traffic flow, uh, driver frustration, and some other things that, that follow with those things. If we just had a loop that went around south of town, no, we can't do that, can we, never mind.
I'm, I'm gonna have to back up with that, I'm not taking that one.
Other questions for Jeremy? Okay, if not, I'll, uh, ask anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the proposal. Seeing none, anyone, uh, in opposition? Seeing none, at this time, I'll close the, uh, public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the preliminary plat at Christie Plaza Two, located at Christie Plaza and three seventy-seven.
Second.
Okay, it's, uh, motion by Mr. McClintock, second by Miss Sacre, to, uh, approve the preliminary plat, uh, case number PP twenty seventeen oh two of Christie Plaza Two Development located at Christie Plaza, US three seventy-seven, any discussion?
Does that also include the, the recommendation of, of changing the streets from, uh, arterial to collectors as a part of the motion?
No, it does not.
It does not.
And it, um, as Jeremy said, we don't need to consider that, because P and Z will meet, and then it'll come back to us for the final plat, based on that decision. So, we've sequenced it. Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Now, we'll proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? That motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Nix, we, uh, we can have future conversation about this next week at the planning and building committee. I plan on bringing this back up for, for conversation if there's additional comments or suggestion. If you guys want additional information prior to that meeting, for me to try to round up, feel free to contact me this week, and I'll bring it on the next Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, the, uh, the next item, Jeremy, the Golf Country Estates Two?
Uh, Golf Country Estates Two, subdivision phase one, staff is recommending acceptance of Golf Country Estates Two, subdivision phase one residential development with a variance to subdivision ordinance. The infrastructure for Golf Country Estates, um, has been installed, and staff has completed the final inspection of the subdivision. The utilities and all improvements are in place, they have been inspected and are ready to be accepted by the city. Acceptance of the subdivision with a variance to the subdivision ordinance is being presented to council for approval. The developer, who is here, Mr. Jack Graham, has indicated that developer design, design engineer is unwilling or, and or unable to comply with the city's stand, standard requirements for providing sealed as builds, uh, or as recorded drawings, and the engineer's certificate in accordance with section four point one four, four point one seven, respectively, uh, the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, Mr. Graham is proposing to extend the maintenance bond, um, in lieu of those, uh, to three years for Golf Country Estates. Um, our, our requirement is two years, so in lieu of not getting as builds. Now, I will say, this is not ideal for, for the city, um, it is a hardship, uh, that Mr. Graham can go into if he, if he chooses to. So I'll let Mr. Graham come up and, and talk, and I can answer any questions on, on, and I'll, I can finish, finish my presentation after he's finished.
Okay. All right, Mr. Graham, thank you for being here tonight, and just go through your, um, description, I guess.
Okay, I wanna thank the council and the mayor, and I'm sorry I don't have, uh, all the stuff that John had, no code names or anything like that. This will probably be kind of a boring presentation for y'all. Uh, basically, what happened, uh, in this whole thing was, uh, one of the developers, Trent Gay, some of you may or may not know him, started this, ended up, for whatever reason, kinda backing out. Because it's at the golf course, now the golf course, I wanted the project to go through, so I inherited it. We went through, worked with the city on all the permits and everything, and we went right by the permits, Gene was out there almost every day. I thought he was one of our new employees for a while, and I made sure everything went through and was done according to the plans. At the end, we went back to the engineering firm, I talked to them, the city talked to them, and they were just very upset, uh, about the whole thing, and, uh, that's when they said, no, we're not gonna do it. And that's when I went to Nick and Jeremy and said, tell me our options, and this is how, why we came up with this. As far as anything bad or changing or anything like that, we went right by the plans. And, uh, so that's why we're here today, to talk about it. And as an incentive for the city, that's where we came up with, we'll give y'all an extra year of bond coverage on the whole project, for that face. So with that, I'll open it up, if some questions, if y'all are.
Any questions for Mr. Graham? Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, let's see. Um, with the, with this city council's acceptance of the subdivision, infrastructure improvements allow the subdivision to be accepted for occupancy and development upon receiving these documents. And I will say, um, like I said, this was not, this is not ideal for the city, we hope this is not something that, um, it's gonna be something that happens in the future. And I think Mr. Graham, uh, is aware of that, and so, uh, we're, we're asking for acceptance of this with a variance.
Questions for Jeremy?
So, it's not ideal, is there added liability to the city because?
Well, I think that's why we, we decided to go, try to get an additional, additional year of, of maintenance bond, so that way if there is, if there was a, an error or something along the way, because an engineer wasn't overseeing that, that we would have that additional comfort to make sure that we have that maintenance bond to fall back on. We typically only ask for two years, we've asked for an additional year.
And it says there was some oversight by city employees?
I think there was quite a bit as far as, uh, the, the, the closeout part of it. Gene was out there quite a bit, making sure that, you know, they had a, a pretty, a pretty lengthy, uh, punch list that they, that they had to go out and complete and, and return back to us. And, um, Gene made sure that was followed, so staff did oversee that part of it.
And was this project begun before Mr. Graham inherited it, or was?
Uh, I love Mr. Graham to speak to that, because it's probably a little bit before even my time sitting in the seat, so.
Uh, yes, sir, the project was started as far as all of these paperwork, and we met with the city up here right about the time we started the project, was when I inherited the project.
So, but no construction had been begun?
No construction.
You've, you've been, you've been there.
Not at all of construction.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Nix?
No reflection on Mr. Graham, but I hesitate when we start looking at and, and considering approval of variances. Uh, the requirements are there, I believe for a reason, and it's to protect the city, the developer, the future occupants, that there's a number of reasons there. Under the circumstances, it appears that we're trying to make the best of a less than perfect situation, and, and provide an opportunity for Mr. Graham to finish the development and, and, and provide more housing, more opportunities for construction and other things in the city. Am I looking at this correctly, that we're, we're trying to move forward and, and do the best we can and help him do the same?
That's the way we feel, um, you know, Nick, uh, Nick has worked with them and his department, and, and we sat down, and, you know, we, we try to think of the, some way to get through this, this situation. I mean, the, the developer, if, the contingent, if, if we don't, if we don't accept this variance, um, the developer's gonna have to try to go find an engineer that will stamp the plans that wasn't out there, um, so they're gonna have to go get it resurveyed. Um, so they're going to have to go get it resurveyed, I mean, and then trying to find an engineer. And we were talking additional, and I'm just guessing, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to, to, to go through that process again. So from the city's standpoint, open for business and just trying to, trying to figure out a way to work with the developer to get these houses going, get them on the tax rolls, get them going. So this was, uh, an option that we're bringing to you. You know, council, I know we have rules for a reason. Um, this was a, a solution that staff thought, uh, would be a, a good one for both sides, so.
It appears, and, and I want to thank you and Nick and, and the staff for trying to work with this gentleman and trying to come up with something that will allow him to move forward. You're talking about a significant cash out lay to go back and also time to go back and try to put all these pieces back together and come back in. And, and I know time in this case is money as it usually is, and I, I appreciate y'all's work on this. I do have a question for Randy. It, is the, is the letter that Mr. Graham signed requesting the variance, is that, is that sufficient to, uh, guarantee the city that, that the bonds will be as they are, or as they should be and be provided, should we agree to this variance?
No, those bonds need to be examined. We need, we need to have those bonds in place. It's not contract. You don't have to have the bond in place.
And those will be examined once, once they are provided to the staff for, for that purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think this letter binds anybody to just tell, tell us what his intentions are.
Okay.
But those bonds will be in place correctly.
Yeah, be similar to any other subdivision, before the, before, uh, it's totally acceptable, we will look over those maintenance bonds and we won't issue, uh, building permits until we make sure that everything's in order.
And COs.
That's what, yeah. You wouldn't get a building permit, or CO unless you were building something, so, yeah.
No, okay, all right, thank you.
Not my, not my error anyways.
Other questions, sure?
Just, just to clarify, what's been said is that there was an original engineering plan done on this. And then the, the work for the plan got followed and was supervised by, or largely attended by our engineer that saw what was happening. But the engineers that did the plan aren't going to stamp the plan. Is that where we're at? So we followed an engineering plan that they did and, okay.
Typically, their engineer would oversee that construction.
Right.
And do that, and their engineer was unavailable to do that. Um, so their construction company worked with Gene, you know, did the, the adequate inspections to make sure that those plans were followed.
Were followed, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Uh, I, I just, uh, wanted to ask, do you have a set of pla, do you have a set of plans? CAD drawings? And we're talking about streets, electrical, water, sewer? And, and so what, what would it take just to, any changes, field changes that were made to get the CAD drawing updated and submitted? Uh, so that we know, the city knows where the lines are, the depth of the lines, the size of the lines? Do, do we have that information?
Yes, sir, because we didn't make any changes.
Okay, so we, we, we have an accurate depiction of what's out there that we can rely on if we have to go out and fix something?
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't support this if my guys hadn't been there every day that, that pipe was being put in the ground.
Okay. And that's, that's the key issue here, I think, and the purpose of the stamped plan is because they've certified that the pipe is the size they said, where they said it was going to be.
Yes.
And the field changes are adjusted and signed at the completion. And what we're saying tonight is that, that we have confidence that the plans as designed were installed. So when our plumber goes out there, they're going to find that pipe.
We have a construction log, we have a diary. We also have the, uh, the tests that were submitted and witnessed by city's public work staff.
All right. Any other? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt, uh, you know, move to accept the Golf Country Estate Two, Phase One subdivision with the variance of the three-year maintenance bond.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Nix to, uh, accept Golf Country Estates Two with, uh, variance of the subdivision ordinance for the three-year, uh, bond extension. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I just, I'm, I'm, I support this tonight, but I certainly don't want to see it coming else like this.
Any other discussion? Don't proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here that, that carries unanimous vote. All right, uh, next on the agenda, and thank you, Mr. Graham, for being here tonight. Uh, next on the agenda is the monthly budget report, Monica Harris.
Mayor, council, this report is for our, uh, period ending May thirty first, twenty seventeen, which is eight months into our fiscal year. For the, uh, property tax, we have received fifty-four thousand, uh, in the month of May, resulting in eighty-five thousand increase over funds collected through May thirty first of last year. The county typically collects about ninety-eight percent of our city's property taxes by the end of May. We have collected five point two one million, uh, which is about ninety-seven point three percent of the amount that we budgeted. So we're just a little sh, uh, shy of that ninety-eight percent norm at ninety-seven point three. Um, our sales tax, we received five hundred and twenty-three thousand in sales tax in May, resulting in a hundred and sixty-six thousand over our target budget through May thirty first. Um, this is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, um, above what we received the previous month in April. We had quite a jump in, in May. The sixty-seven percent target budget for our operating revenue is fifteen point three million. We've received seventeen point five million in operating revenue, which is two point two million above, uh, which is reflected in our taxes, our service charges, and our grants. The sixty-seven percent target budget for our operating expenditure is twelve point seven million. We've only expended eleven point eight million, which is nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand under our budget. The operating revenue received last year was seventeen point four million, as compared to this year's seventeen point six million, which is two hundred and three thousand, uh, increase. And that's in our property taxes, grants, and service charges. The operating revenues last year were eleven million, as compared to this year's eleven point eight million, uh, which is resulting in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. In our general fund, we had a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar increase, and that was caused by, um, the same personnel vacancies and additions to personnel this year that I've basically repeated throughout. Um, in the utility fund, the three hundred and eighteen thousand increase, same thing. This is, uh, still is a result of our Tarleton Methodist Branch Sewer Study, the Eastside Sewer Project, and, um, higher maintenance costs this year. And in our special revenue fund, the two hundred and forty-one thousand increase, again, was from, uh, CETA and then the purchase of the Signal Crosswalk and electronic ticket riders. As far as our new programs, uh, we had spent four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars of the eight hundred and eighty-six thousand budgeted for the street improvements through May. Um, this does include the, uh, budget adjustments through May, but not the ones that you approved in June. So that's why the, uh, the amount went from seven hundred and fifty thousand budget to a hundred and, I mean, eight hundred and eighty-six, because we did carry over a hundred and thirty-six thousand from last year. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions for Monica? Okay, thank you very much. All right, next, uh, the consent agenda. Entertainer motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McClintock, seconded by Mr. Nix, any discussion? Don't proceed to vote, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approving the consent agenda. Comments by the city administrators, Mr. Barnes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on the thirteenth, which is this coming Thursday, Casey Donahue will be the entertainer at the concert series. On the eighteenth, we have a Planning and Building Committee meeting. The twenty-fifth, we have a council workshop on charter amendments and, uh, the animal shelter. Applications for the police academy, uh, the citizens' police academy begins on Monday. Uh, that's July seventeenth, and, and the application period runs through August the fourth. The classes start on August twenty-fourth and run six P M. to nine P M. every Thursday for ten weeks. And my final comment is, is I want to thank Cindy for the last five months of making my, my integration into, uh, Stevensville, uh, smoother and a whole lot more fun, and I wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you.
All right, council members. Mr. McClintock?
I'd also say, good retirement, Cindy, we wish you. And then I want to give kudos out to everybody involved with the Fourth of July celebration in town from the very beginning, moving to kickoff thing and, and the parade entries started lining up at six-thirty in the morning and from six-thirty until ten-thirty that night, it was just fantastic. So kudos to everybody involved with that.
City also wants to say thank you. There is a term we throw around lightly, public service, if you all want to.
I'll be right back.
Cindy, thanks, appreciate all the years. Also want to piggyback on, on Mark, uh, July fourth was just great. Makes you want to be, uh, part of, uh, kind of all-American experience. And, uh, hats off to Parks and Rec, I know y'all guys put a lot into that, so that's all I have.
Okay. To Nix?
Not to sound like a broken record, but July fourth was outstanding this year, I thought. Uh, and, and all of our city employees from top to bottom did an outstanding job making sure that traffic moved or stopped or whatever was appropriate, they did an outstanding job. Also, I'd like to thank Greg Brunner and Brunner Motors for furnishing the vehicles for us, cause that, they always, they and the other major motor company in Stevensville also provide rides for us alternating years, but, uh, Brunner's did a good job this year, provided good rides for us. Cindy, I could not leave without thanking you for the many years of service that you have provided to us as council members and the friendship that you have provided to us and many, many others. I may have a little stronger tie with you because I was privileged to be able to, to interview and select you and hire you for the position that you now hold. And, and I will always be thankful that at that day, we made the right decision. And I think you have proven that time and time again. And I want to thank you for what you have done for various councils and for the city of Stevensville, because the city has been blessed with your presence, your service, and, and all the things that you have done through the years for all of us. Thank you, may God bless you, may you enjoy retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Sacre.
Um, I'd also like to thank all the city employees that worked on the, uh, Fourth of July celebration. Also, all the volunteers that helped organize all the things that happened. It was a really, really great day. I've heard just nothing but good stuff about how, how it went. And, uh, uh, and the weather was nice, which was an added, added niceness. And I'd also, Cindy, thank you again, and I wish you a very happy retirement and, and, uh, and we just have really appreciated your service, thank you.
If you need any tips on retirement? You know, you've done an outstanding job, uh, thinking back, it was sad circumstances. They got you here.
That's life.
Yeah, we go back a while, don't we?
Yes, we did.
Well, have fun.
Thank you.
If you have half as much as I do, you're all going to be all right.
I'd hate to keep up with you. I know I can't stay up that late.
Mr. Nix has a, an alibi here.
And I should, and I apologize, Stacy, welcome. I know that you will do an outstanding job, as Cindy has done, and, and I want to welcome you into the position. I know you've been an employee for some time, but I welcome you into the position of city secretary. And you may learn some things about us that you didn't know and perhaps some things you didn't want to know. But nevertheless, welcome to it and good luck to you.
Okay. All right, well, let me, uh, let me just, um, say that the, uh, the council is, is in the, uh, the midst of the beginning. We had a meeting yesterday to talk about the budget and, uh, there are a lot of work ahead of us in July and August. And I appreciate all the work of the staff and, and the council in preparation for that. The Fourth of July, uh, the biggest parade in a small town in, in the country is, uh, doesn't come off, uh, the way it did without a lot of hard work and in the spirit of, of a community that you cannot, uh, create if it doesn't exist there. And, uh, that, that is so important and a reflection of our community and is such a proud moment, uh, I think, for us to, to share, uh, for generations. For the staff, the coordination of that, you know, great job. You see the police officers out there, manning the, the gates, keeping us safe and, and, uh, just all that the parks did to, to pull that off, so thank y'all very much for that. It is, uh, truly a special event to, to honor our nation on that day. And I also, um, just make a habit over the Fourth of July weekend of, of, of watching the movie Gettysburg as a reminder that freedom is not free and that, that we celebrate on that day is more than just a declaration that was signed, but, uh, it, it is, uh, a result of a continued diligence by our nation. The, um, the city has an opportunity to shine in October, and you might ask why am I bringing this up in July? Went to a meeting this afternoon, which was the initial kickoff meeting for, uh, Tarleton is going to host the Texas A and M System Board of Regents, October seventeenth through nineteenth. What does that mean? That means the, the chancellor of the A and M System, all of the vice chancellors, and all the presidents of the, the thirteen A and M System universities and their provosts are going to be in our community. What an opportunity for us to show off Stevensville, uh, to, uh, these other universities and, and cities. And so I just want to, you know, put that out on our planning, um, horizon of something that's, that's going to be really important to, to look forward to. And then I want to just remind, uh, everyone that's listening or, uh, just us, us here in the room that this Friday, uh, four to six P M., there will be a celebration in honor of Cindy Stafford, uh, out at, uh, City Limits. I just want to invite everybody, uh, to come out to that and share in the celebration of her time here. And, uh, Cindy, I, I will, I, I'll conclude in two ways. One, by, by thanking you for your, um, your tenacity, your humor, uh, all that you provide. Uh, you, uh, when God made you, he made you for this, this, this position. And you showed it not only in your, your ability to do the job, but in, in the way you, you showed your, your love for the job and, and for us and put up with all of us. And so, so thank you for that, uh, for all that you've done. You, you will be greatly missed. And, uh, you, you need to know that, uh, you're, you're leaving us better than you, you found us, and that's always a good thing. And Stacy, to you, welcome. We look forward to, uh, uh, you, you picking up the baton and, and carrying it on. And we know you will, and we have full confidence in you. And the city secretary is one of those mystery jobs. It's not just answering the phone. There's, there's legal, uh, responsibility that you inherit, there's responsibility that, that are constitutional in their, uh, nature, and it's not something to be taken lightly. And we greatly appreciate both you women and, and what you represent to the profession and, um, and to what you bring. So thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to end, uh, returning the floor to, uh, the city secretary, Cindy Stafford, and see if you'd like to, to say anything.
Thanks for the heads up. I'll begin by, in, uh, reply to your remarks, God doesn't make mistakes. So I guess I'm where I, I was supposed to be, and I've tried to live my life just having faith that I am where I'm needed and, uh, as my parents taught, do the best you can. And I can't tell you, it's been said here many times tonight, Stevensville is a great place. I'm glad that, uh, came to Tarleton and then got a job after graduating. In fact, we're, I, I thought this today, my car is parked about fifteen feet from the door where I first went to work, just right across the street. So I guess you could say I've made a full circle and, uh, but it's been great. And it's the people that make the town and, uh, it's the people that make this organization. town, and it's the people that make this organization. And, you know, they say that there's some, you know, some, what's the word, some eggheads or knuckleheads in in every bunch, but everybody serves Stevensville because they love Stevensville, and it takes all of us to make this wonderful community, and I'm glad that I've been able to do that. Now, thank you all, and come party. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, and thank you, Mr. Graham, for being here tonight. Next on the agenda is the monthly budget report, Monica Harris.
Mayor, council, this report is for our period ending May thirty-first, twenty seventeen, which is eight months into our fiscal year. For the property tax, we have received fifty-four thousand in the month of May, resulting